We will, we will call this June 22nd, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Carmel Clay School Board to Order. As you can see, we are once again back in the Carmel Clay Schools Educational Service Center and practicing social distancing. Also, we do have some members of the community in, with us who are also practicing social distancing. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
All board members are present for today's meeting.
Thank you. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move first into presentations. I see Dr. O'Stryke is at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, President Kirschner, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. It's my distinct honor this evening to present our Carmel Clay Schools 2020 Teacher of the Year, and would, at this time, Katie Biltimer please join me at the podium? Katie was chosen from a committee of her peers and administrators and community members among numerous recommendations for our Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year. And based upon the recommendations, based upon the committee holding her in such high regard, she was chosen as the 2020 Teacher of the Year here with Carmel Clay Schools. One of the comments I'd like to read, I could have selected any number of comments, as she received numerous nominations for this honor, is that Katie models patience, engagement, and de-escalation strategies to help all kids. Knowing, reading, and relating to people makes Katie so effective. She easily forms relationships with students and families, making them feel safe and loved. She advocates for them while holding them to such a high standard. Katie is respected by her peers because of her initiative, excitement, ingenuity, and hard work. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in recognizing and honoring, one more time, our 2020 Carmel Clay Schools from Carmel Elementary School Special Education Teacher, Katie Biltimer. We have some items for you to take to wish you well for this award, and at this time, I'd like to bring up Carmel Elementary School Principal, Megan Cwigan-Smith.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. O'Stryke. When Dr. O asked if I would be willing to say a few things about Katie, I jumped at the opportunity, and I was so glad that I could take off my mask for this part, because I think my smile might say it all. We love Katie so much. She, we are so fortunate to work with her on a daily basis. There are just educators, people in life, that build everybody up, that lift them up, and Katie is one of those people. She inspires those around her. She is always smiling and thinking. So many evenings, you'll find her at Carmel Elementary, thinking, helping a colleague through a problem, talking to parents late at night, thinking about our students, and how she can reshape their goals for the next day, try new strategies, and make them love learning. So I think we are all very fortunate to work with Katie on a daily basis. Her impact in the Carmel Clay Schools is great, and we are thrilled for you and love you so much. So congratulations, Katie.
There are a couple more people that wish they could be here this evening, but unfortunately, they were not able to. The first is Susan Backer, who is the wife of the late Stephen A. Backer, for which our Carmel Clay Schools Teacher of the Year Award is endowed and named after. Susan sends her heartfelt congratulations to you on being named our 2020 Teacher of the Year. Additionally, Jen Pennix, who's the Executive Director of the Carmel Education Foundation, could not be in attendance this evening, but is extremely excited on you being named our Teacher of the Year, and she wishes she could be here, because with this endowed award also comes a check that she wanted to give to you in person. However, that will be in the mail, so be on the lookout for that, too. In addition to the flowers, I also have, on behalf of our school board, a certificate for you on this great award that I'm going to pass to Megan. And then finally, this beautiful Carmel Clay Schools Stephen A. Backer Teacher of the Year Award with your name on it will go up proudly at Carmel Elementary School. And at this time, Katie, would you like to say a couple words? Come on up.
Well, I'm very honored and humbled.
Katie's a fire. You know we've been here, and we've made Katie.
I, I'm one of those fortunate people that truly gets to do what I love every day. I really do love my job. There are days that maybe I don't like it as much as other days, but overall, it's just wonderful. I work with amazing people, and not just, like, everyone in our building, all the teachers, all the support staff, the administration, it's a wonderful place to work. And the students feel that, and they are happy to be there every day, and that's, you know, our job. So, in light of that, I really hope we go back to school on the phone, because virtual learning was really stressful and hard for me, because I really missed connecting with my kids, because teaching is about connections, and that's how we learn and grow, not just kids, but, you know, teachers as well. So I want us all to be safe, but I really, I'm just, I, I thank you. I'm just so honored and speechless, and so I, I will honor and present, and, you know, I'm happy to support Carmel Clay Schools as Teacher of the Year, so thank you.
We're very proud of you, and based upon her words, we know why you were selected for this esteemed honor, so congratulations again. And at this time, I'd like Peggy Taylor to please come forward. Peggy is Carmel Clay Schools Support Staff Member of the Year. Let's give her a round of applause. My favorite part of preparing for this evening was reading all of the comments, first about Katie and then about Peggy. And every time I read a comment about Peggy, I had a huge smile on my face, because that shone through in all of the comments, your positivity and your willingness to go above and beyond and do whatever it takes to help anybody at the Freshman Center at Carmel High School. But I am gonna, I am gonna read one of the comments here that I really appreciated. So first of all, for all of you, Peggy is the Freshman Center Administrative Assistant at Carmel High School. See, I was reading thoughts there in the audience in the back there. I got you, I got you. And she has served in the Freshman Center for the past 16 years. And so now for one of the comments, and all of the comments really echoed what I'm about to share. Peggy is an incredible asset to our school. She is kind, patient, and very compassionate with the students. She always has a smile on her face and always greets staff, students, and parents in a welcoming way. Peggy is very helpful to staff whenever we have a question and need help getting to the right people to solve the problem. She is always available. I cannot remember a time when I've called and she didn't answer right away. She goes above and beyond to help the students and the staff. Congratulations Carmel Clay Schools Support Staff Member of the Year, Peggy Taylor. And at this time, I'm going to bring up Assistant Principal of the Freshman Center, Amy Skeens.
I'll start with a Peggy start. Hello, this is Peggy. Welcome to Carmel High School. How can I help you? And that's the exact tone every parent gets. And what's great about the Freshman Center is everyone's new. And so when everyone's new, their very, very, very first impression is that voice that comes over on that phone. It's also when they come to the door. And when they answer the door and they ring that bell, wondering, first of all, which door to even enter, because they can't figure out, because the lock is on this, but you have to open this one, but on the other side, you open the one that doesn't have the lock, Peggy so kindly and so, so gracefully says, hi, welcome to Carmel House High School. How can I help you? And they say, well, I'm here to pick up something. Well, why don't you come right in? We'll be here to help you. Every single time, when kids come in and they greet Peggy with those puppy dog eyes and that wonderful smile, and sometimes they don't make the best choices, and might be why they're in that office, they calm down, they listen to Peggy. She is the barometer, and it's a calm, it's easy, it's you're gonna be okay, you're loved, you're going to be taken care of, no matter, and that is the best message we could give at Carmel High School, and especially in the Freshman Center. I cannot tell you how awesome it is to have Peggy working in the Freshman Center with us, how awesome it is that she calms me down, along with everyone else. And we've started together, and she was there when I was there, and she cannot leave. So Peggy, I don't care if you are going to be 120, you are going to be at the Freshman Center. Thank you so much. There was quite a campaign for Peggy to get this, if you didn't know, for over, not just this year. So yes, I'm sure you got many emails, and when she received this award and it was posted, you can't imagine the social media explosion that occurred from kids that graduated 15 years ago. And to show a testament of who Peggy is, when we had our Random Act of Kindness, it was seniors that chose Peggy as the person that they wanted to congratulate, and the person that they wanted to say, we love you, thank you for what you do. Peggy, thank you, we love you, we love you.
Before we have Peggy say a few words, I'd also like to bring up Dr. Harmis, Principal of Carmel High School. We appreciate him being here and supporting Peggy tonight, and we want to present Carmel High School with this plaque in which Peggy will also be featured on, that will hang and be displayed proudly at the Freshman Center at Carmel High School in honor of Peggy, and also on behalf of our outstanding school board. We do have a certificate for you, and without further ado, I'd like to bring up Peggy Taylor.
Thank you very much. I can't tell you how humbled I am with this award. When the kids come to the Freshman Center, I'm a grandma, so all those kids are my grandchildren, and I treat them the way I want my grandchildren to be treated. And I always try to, to be happy for them, and to love them, and to know that, that I want them to know that they're safe, and that if they have any questions, any problems, that we're always there to help them. And so as a grandma, that's all I want. I just want to be there for them, and to let them know that they are safe and all their needs will be met.
Well, thank you, Dr. O'Stryke, and really thank you to Katie and Peggy for what you do each and every day for our kids. We truly appreciate what you do, and we thank you for what you do. Next on the agenda is public comment. Seeing none, we will quickly move on with a brief pause for those of you that would not like to stay for the full meeting. We will excuse you if you would like on this beautiful summer evening, but then after that, we'll quickly move into consent. Approval of a Gift Application, which is a scholarship awarded to a Carmel High School student for Equitable Excellence Scholarship to Iris Yan. We have the approval of the Regular Session Meeting from May 18th, and the Executive Session Meeting from May 26th. May I have a motion to approve consent, please? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion? Thank you. There being none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all were in favor. At this point, I'd like to pause and turn the podium over to Dr. O'Stryke, please.
Thank you, President Kirschner. As part of the consent agenda this evening, we were able to approve the appointment of Catherine Persall, who's in the audience with us this evening. Catherine will be the new Assistant Principal at West Clay Elementary School for first semester this coming school year, as she will be filling in for a leave. Catherine has been a teacher with Carmel Clay Schools since 2007. She's an Indiana University graduate, undergrad, and received her master's degree and her educational administration license from Ball State University. Catherine really stood out as a part of the interview process. She has extensive leadership experiences with Carmel Clay Schools. She, in her interview, was extremely positive, innovative, enthusiastic, were some of the attributes that really drew her to, drew us to this recommendation. She served as a technology coordinator, a lead teacher in the district. She's immersed herself in professional development all throughout the district, and she was also a seventh-grade cheerleading coach at Carmel Middle School for a number of years, as a fun fact about Catherine. But we are extremely excited that she's going to be serving in this role during the first semester for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Dr. O'Stryke, and thank you, Catherine. Again, we will not be, what's the word I'm looking for? We will not think any lighter, 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 less of you, thank you. If you do not decide to stay for the rest of the meeting, we understand. We will next move to action items. The first item we have is a benefit change for administrators, department chairs, therapists, and nurses. Mr. McMichael.
Currently, we have about, I believe, 132 employees that the district provides a 1% match to a 403B plan. And years ago, we had well over 1,000, including our teachers, and in the course of negotiations and so forth, that was discontinued. So the recommendation here is to discontinue it for all employees, which would include administrators, department chairs, therapists, and nurses. We would grandfather the employees that currently have that benefit, so as to not, they wouldn't lose anything, but then going forward, any new hires, we would not offer that benefit. We don't, we also don't feel that it's necessary in terms of maintaining competitive in the, in the marketplace.
Thank you, Roger. May I have a motion to approve the action item for the benefit change for administrators, department chairs, therapists, and nurses? Thank you, Leila. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there any discussion? Well, thank you, Roger. You just answered my question about making sure that we remain competitive, and I had previously requested information about the numbers, and we appreciate that was helpful in my, wrapping my arms around what we were talking about here and why we were getting the recommendation. So any other questions for Mr. McMichael? No? So all in favor of adopting the recommendation for benefit change for administrators, department chairs, therapists, and nurses, please raise your hand. Thank you, all in favor. We will next move to the next action item, which is a benefit change for administrators. Again, Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. Currently, the district provides cell phones for a number, cell phones for a number of employees, including administrators, but also our maintenance staff and our IT repair people. Now, these are used for business purposes, is primarily why we provide them, so that they're, can contact each other and that we can contact them. So the proposal, but we have some, particularly administrators, that in some cases carry two phones, because they have their personal phone, and they have the phone issued by the school district, and, and so the recommendation here is to, to provide a stipend for administrators in the amount of $50 a pay. And, and we would continue to provide phones for the other staff, and we think this would be a, really a better benefit for the employee, and it's pretty much cost neutral for us, so there's, there's no real financial impact to doing this.
Thank you, Roger. May I have a motion to approve the benefit change for administrators for cellphone stipends?
So moved.
Thank you, Katie. Any, a second, please? Thank you, Leila. Any questions for Mr. McMichael? All right, I feel like I'm asking all the questions. So I'm assuming that when we have a three-month pay, there will not be a stipend for that?
Actually, I was assuming it would be every pay, so that would, and we're paid, so we're paid 26 times a year.
Okay, so some months they might get $150, and some months they might get $100.
Right, so with deductions, we do take deductions, 24 pays, but stipends not necessarily.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? No? We will now vote, all in favor of approving the benefit change for administrators to provide a cellphone stipend for certain administrators. Please signify by, by raising your hand. Thank you, all voted in favor of that recommendation. Next on the action items are resolutions authorizing administration to handle work disruption for employees impacted by coronavirus. Dr. Bearsford.
Yeah, I'm bringing two resolutions this evening to you, and both of them are related to the coronavirus. The first one is the authorizing suspension of policies and procedures in conflict with current law. And what that is, it's recommended by our legal counsel, Churchill, Hill, and Antrim, that in this setting, when the governor's issuing a lot of orders, some of those orders may be in conflict with what our school policies and procedures are. And so what this resolution does is if we're in a situation where the governor gives an order, or the legislature does a temporary order of some kind due to the coronavirus, that we would suspend our policy and, and follow the directives of the, of the governor. For instance, I'll give you, an example might be like if we have a situation where if you have a fever, and we say you have to be 24 hours fever-free, but the direction from the medical community and the governor and the Department of Ed is 72 hours due to the coronavirus, we would go to the, do the 72 hours and not the, not the 24 hours. So that's what the purpose of that resolution is. And if it's all right with you, I'll go ahead and go, explain the second one as well, which is authorizing the administration to handle work disruption for employees impacted by coronavirus. You actually approved this resolution earlier this year, or excuse me, in the third, fourth quarter of last year, in order for the administration to have the authority to take action, and in that case, it was when schools were closed that we were able to use that resolution to pay people that could not work or their work was disrupted by the, the closings of the school. And so what we're proposing, that we would again re-up that resolution. Both of these resolutions have a sunset as on August 24th, 2020. That is actually the night of a board meeting, so we can reevaluate that time if, if that's needed. But again, it's a situation where we may have, you know, a setting where maybe the virus closes a school, or does, you know, or it closes a, a classroom. We just don't know what exactly to expect in environments, so we want to have the ability to take action and swift action as needed to meet the needs of our employees and our students, and, and to be in compliance with the orders from the governor and the Department of Ed and all those who are supervising us. So with that, I would recommend the passing of both these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bearsford. I'm going to take those motions separately. So first, may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing administration to handle work disruptions for employees impacted by coronavirus? Thank you, Leila. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have any questions for Dr. Bearsford on this resolution? There being none, we will now vote, all in favor of approving the resolution authorizing administration to handle work disruptions for employees impacted by coronavirus, please raise your hand. Thank you, all were in favor of that. Next, may I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing suspension of policies and procedures in conflict with current law?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Do we have any questions for Dr. Bearsford on this resolution? There being none, thank you. We will now vote, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all were in favor, motion carries. Next, we will move to adopt a resolution authorizing publication of notices for a public hearing. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. At the 18th meeting, the administration and others presented a proposal, a three-year proposal for facility projects that are primarily at Carmel High School, but also at various other schools. These projects would be, would be funded with two general obligation bonds and a two-series lease rental bond. All these bonds, we anticipate, would be paid off in eight years, and there's no tax increase. So the next step in this process would be to, for the So, the next step in this process would be to, for the board, to approve this resolution, which would provide for two public hearings, that sometimes you refer to as determination hearings, but the concept is, is that they're, these meetings would be held to give opportunity for public input as you consider the proposal, and then consider also the public input. And so, that, those, that would be the next two steps, those two meetings, and then there are about three other steps that the board's involved directly with, in the public, before we would actually move forward to sell bonds and, you know, develop the project. So, we're recommending that the board adopt this resolution to provide for those advertisements.
Thank you, Roger. May I have a motion to approve adopting a resolution authorizing publication of notices for a public hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. A second? Thank you, Leila. Do we have any questions for Roger on this proposal? Wow, there being no questions. I do have, I, just a clarification. Oh, no, I'm jumping ahead of myself. I don't have a question on this. No questions on this? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Katie.
That's okay. Do we have a, what's the timeline for this, once you're posting for the notices? What are you?
The timeline for the meetings?
Yeah.
For the hearings? The first one would be in July, the only meeting in July, late in July, and then the second meeting would be the second meeting in August.
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no further questions, we will now vote to adopt the resolution authorizing publication of notices for a public hearing. If you're in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all were in favor. Motion carries. Next, we will move to the approval of a quick claim deed and a cross-easement between Carmel Clay Schools and the Carmel Clay Public Library. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. We can get, Colleen can make it, this will help us here, we'll try to get a visual up here, but the recommendation here is to transfer property between Carmel High, Carmel Elementary School and the public library, a small strip of property, and to do a quick claim deed for about three-quarters of an acre of property. The board is aware of this, but for interest of the public, years ago, in the mid or late 90s, the school district sold what we thought was five acres of property to build the new library. And, and so, but several years ago, when we were replacing the sign for Carmel Elementary, which required a survey, we found that actually what had been deeded over was about five acres, 5.75 acres. And so, so we have not, we never did anything with that, but both parties were aware of it, and it really didn't affect the school, because the, the library assumed five acres as well. So, they, they stopped their parking lot where they thought their property ended, but it actually went further south. And so, now we fast forward, and it happens that both public entities are doing two significant projects. As the board knows, we're building a school, and they're doing a major renovation and addition. And a part of their addition is a parking garage, and so, they need a little more property, including, not only including the 0.75 acre, but also about a 10 or 15-foot strip, I believe, for a setback requirement after that. So, so I consider this really a very positive relationship and partnership with the, with the library. We're both government entities. Whatever money is spent, it's from the same taxpayers. So, so what I'm referring to here is, in the lighter rose color or pink, that would be the 0.75 acres. And then the darker red is the strip of property that they need for their setback requirement. And then the blue is the drive, as you can see, and basically, on the drive, we'll share the drive. They'll share it to get out of the parking lot and, or garage. We will share it in order to get into the parking garage on occasion, because part of the relationship is, is that the school will be permitted to use the parking garage for certain events, back to school night, or certain things like that, where typically there's not sufficient parking at the school, and we know that what typically happens at some point is, is the people park in the neighborhoods. And, and that's not always desirable on behalf of the neighbors. So, so that's, that's really the recommendation, is to transfer the one piece of property and do a quick claim deed on the other, and then we would, we have easement agreements that where we would basically share the drives.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve a quick claim deed and cross-easement between Carmel Clay Schools and Carmel Clay Public Library? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Anybody besides myself have questions? Pam?
Yes. Could you explain the, what they, what they will be doing when they come out of the garage and going down the, the road or the driveway from the?
The darker blue, yeah.
Right. But will they be using that during school day, school time, when, when parents are going in to pick up their children at the end of the day? Will this interfere with anything that's going on at the school?
We don't think it'll interfere, to answer your question, but as it is now, you're probably familiar with, right now, they, the library's surface parking exits onto what we thought was the school parking lot. And so, that's really happening now. And keeping in mind that with the new building, the existing building will be gone, and that, so there's, everything's pushed south on the property. And so, as it is now, really, the, the, well, now, the, the exit for the school is, is the, also the exit for the library parking lot. And so, it'll be a similar arrangement here, except in this case, it's, it's the entrance for us and the exit. And so...
So, you're saying blue, is that purple?
Purple, blue.
Okay, so, the purple, in other words, they'll come out of the back of the parking garage and come around to that purple drive and then exit that way?
Yes.
So, that looks pretty close to the school.
Well, that's not the, I mean, it's on the, more or less the corner of the parking lot, not the corner of the school.
So, is there a reason why it's so large? I just don't want that to interfere with what's going on.
I think the architects laid it out this way, not so much for the library, but for us to have it, you know, as you, as you come in. It takes you, takes our patrons into the property and then into the parking lot. If they, if they moved it to the north, you'd be really, with no real good reason, you'd be, you'd be going, you'd be over north and heading east, and then you'd have to still go south to connect to the parking lot. So, you'd have kind of an L shape to get in, rather than just a direct into the parking lot.
So, our traffic will be going in that, the white driveway down there at the bottom?
No, the purple diagonal.
When they go in to pick up kids at the end of the day, or drop kids off in the morning?
Well, they go in on the purple to get to, to, to the surface lot, and then, then it, Rod, you want to explain this up here?
Um, what's this? Michael? Um, part of the, that's missing that you can't see, in that triangle, is some landscaping, and there's a tree there that everybody calls the mother tree, and it's protected, in essence. And so, that is part of the reason that the drive is splayed out like that.
Okay.
We currently enter and exit through the same drive as the library exits through now. So, that, that whole scenario exists now. We've just kind of stretched it out a little bit to benefit us in terms of, as Roger said, to benefit us in terms of our access to the parking lot, because our access is direct in where the library has to kind of loop around, which they do now, sort of, they're a little closer to the library currently. But in this scheme, we're also protecting some protected trees.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Leila?
How do I get back? How do I get? Sorry, I was trying to get this graphic.
There, I think, Leila, what it means is, we are going to be going across their property to exit the facility, so that's why we have an easement to allow us to cross their property. Why there's a question mark on there, I don't know.
I think there's something, part of that is all a problem factor, but then, there's something in there that's going to change all that for both of us, at Port Avenue. So, that, you know, that's why we had to dedicate some right away to the city, the library's having to do the same thing. And there'll be something going on there somewhere in the future that will change all that entrance point, and that's why some of our stuff is set back farther than we might normally have it, because we know it could get disrupted in the future.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, I appreciate us working with the library and obviously with the city. I just have a couple of questions and maybe, one, I guess I appreciate on this photo that, or schematic that Roger shared with us, it does show us where the current school is located, which I think is relevant, because as we all know, we are moving the building back from there. So, there will be more space in the front, obviously less space in the rear of the property. And as I'm looking at this, above the library surface parking lot, the access road has arrows going both ways. I'm assuming that's an error. I'm assuming their flow is going to come in like it does now, and then all their exit is going to be across the blue area.
I think the answer to that, yes, but it's going, I believe it's going, showing both ways, because we would access it from that side.
Oh.
Using it for event parking.
Oh, yeah, okay, for us to get in the parking lot?
Yes.
Good. That ma, that makes sense. Thank you. And then, the drawing was marked as Exhibit F. I just want to be clear that it's not Exhibit F to the easement. It's obviously Exhibit F to something else.
Right. Yes. That, you're right, that, this exhibit was taken from another document for just to be able to show the board.
Okay. And I, I think, as has already been said, it's important to recognize that we will have the benefit of using the parking garage when we need it, and also that we are responsible for maintaining our driveway, which we would do anyway.
Right.
So, any other questions from the board? Also, we will now vote, all in favor of approval of a quick claim deed and a cross-easement between Carmel Clay Schools and Carmel Clay Public Library. Please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all in favor. That motion and recommendation carries. Next, we will move to a recommendation for Carmel Clay Public Library Board appointment. Dr. Beresford.
As you recall from our last meeting, Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees makes three appointees to the Carmel Clay Library Board, and in 2018, Ms. Stephanie King was appointed by Carmel Clay Board to fill the remaining term of Library Trustee Bill Wabenga, who sadly passed away in 2018. Mr. Bob Swainy, the Director of Carmel Clay Public School Library, has recommended the reappointment of Mrs. Kim now to her own term on the library board. We are supportive of that recommendation, and bring that to you now for action.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation for the Carmel Clay Library Board appointment? Thank you, Pam. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for Dr. Beresford on this recommendation? There being none, all in favor of approving the recommendation for the appointment to the Carmel Clay School Library Board, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, all were in favor. Motion and recommendation carries. Next, we will move to miscellaneous material adoption. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So, this evening, for your approval, I bring to you some miscellaneous materials adoption. These are new courses, several new courses in our special ed department that include applied English, applied geometry, applied US history, as well as materials in our literacy program at the high school, the middle school, and then also at the elementary school.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. May I have a motion to approve the miscellaneous materials adoption recommendation? Thank you, Pam. Second? Thank you, Leila. Do we have any questions on this recommendation? There being none, we will now vote, all in favor of approving the recommendation for the miscellaneous materials adoption. Please, please raise your hand to signify in favor. Thank you. All were in favor. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will move to discussion portion of our meeting. First item is material rental and fee changes for 2020, 2021. Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. So, this evening, I bring before you for discussion, changes in our material rental and fees. And as you may recall, each year in June, I bring this as a discussion, as fees changes, change for various reasons. Some would be the adoption of new materials, like you just approved, and others are just where fees change, where they may go up or down based on inflation, or that we stop using certain materials. And so, this is an extensive spreadsheet with the changes for the 2021 material and fees, fees that we charge our students.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do we have any questions on this item? Leila?
Can we transition to the next semester, and some of our classes will be virtual, or at least then we'll have it out, we can have virtual classes? Does that impact the fees?
So, it won't impact the fees, because the students will still have the access to these materials. For example, one of the things that you just approved on the adopted list is a, for the middle school, a, it's online, virtual books that students will be able to use in person, as well as online as well.
Thank you, Leila. Katie?
I'm just to follow up with that. So, what, I know that we, there's books, but what about like supplies, like in elementary? Same, my question with virtual, because we're buying pencils and crayons and all that kind of stuff, too.
Right. So, so with the elementary ones, those, if they're not using them in the classroom, then we send them home. Like when we, any of those consumable type fees, they go home with the students to use at home. Now, last, the last nine weeks, we did not send them home right away, because we didn't know if we'd be coming back or what have you. So, you know, if the students need them, we can send them home and bring them back, not knowing what next year would bring.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. There being no further questions, we will move to the next discussion item, which is a first reading of Policy 8340, Student Mental and Behavioral Service Records. Dr. Dudley?
Yes, so this policy is a proposed new policy that is proposed, it's recommended by ISBA, and it is required by legislation from the last legislative session. This policy is that we can not share any of our student records, that our students are receiving mental health services, for example, with our partnership with a mental health provider, and we cannot share those with any other outside mental health providers. And then it also stipulates how those records are controlled in our school buildings.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Dr. Dudley on this new policy? Katie?
So, just to make sure I'm understanding, so if a student is receiving mental health services outside of our school, even if it's loc, even if the person's located in our building, if it's a contracted, then that's...
So just to make sure I'm understanding, so if a student is receiving mental health services outside of our school, even if it's loca-, even if the person's located in our building, if it's a contracted, then that information can't be shared with the school? Or, okay, go ahead.
So if the student is receiving mental health services with our contracted vendor inside our school, these, we cannot share that with an outside, another outside agency. And then also, we need to make sure that these, we protect those records. It's not, it doesn't go in their students' Cune folder. It's a separate record that we keep. And talking about where we keep those records.
Thanks for clarifying.
I could add a little clarification to that. In contracted service, all of the mental health records will be, you know, owned by the, the student and family and the mental health therapist. So those records aren't shared with school personnel at all unless a parent gives permission, a consent form, to share information with, you know, maybe the teacher or the social worker, the, the school counselor. So this is not really a, any kind of a deviation from normal practice to protect that student information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Dr. Beresford, any further questions on this policy? Thank you. We will next move to the first reading of Policy 6152, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. Dr. Dudley?
So this policy and the policy that follows it, you'll notice that the information in both of the policies is the same information. This information was added to the policy based on the recommendation from the State Board Auditor after our last audit, and it's information that regarding bad checks and uncollectible debts. And you'll notice that it's in both Policy 6152, as well as the Food Services Policy 8500, since we collect fees for both of those programs.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Any questions for Dr. Dudley on this policy? Okay, I understand that this is based upon what the State Board of Accounts recommended, but it seems to me that the one for student fees should refer to student fees and not to student lunches, and that the one for student lunches will obviously refer to the ones for student lunches. So I guess that's just a comment, and maybe we'll see a change when we come back, or maybe we won't.
So, yeah, I mean, we've talked to Mr. McMichael and
Okay, thank you. Next, we will move to the first reading of Policy 8500, Food Services. Dr. Dudley?
So that is the, the same information that is in the Policy 6152, that talks about the bad checks and the uncollectible debt, and what we are to do with that with the accounts.
Thank you. Any questions on that policy? No, we will next move to the first reading of Policy 8510 on wellness. Dr. Dudley?
So this policy recommendations were made by Mrs. Jennifer McFarland, our Director of Food Services. She oversees our Wellness Committee for the district. And one of her recommendations, as you'll notice in this policy, has streamlined the policy quite a bit, and that's one thing I know our policy committee has been trying to do, is what needs to be in policy and what needs to be in administrative guidelines. And so it has streamlined it, and the proposal here is everything that is highlighted would be moved to administrative guidelines to support this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Do we have any questions for Dr. Dudley on this policy? Thank you. We will next move to the first reading of Policy 5370, Educational Options. Dr. Dudley?
Okay, so this policy is adding virtual learning opportunities to our policy on educational options. We felt in lieu of our virtual learning opportunities we had, we did not have that in policy. So now that we're recommending that it reflects virtual learning opportunities.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Any questions on that? No. Next, we will move to the first reading on Policy 8210, School Calendar. Dr. Dudley?
So in our review with our attorneys and some professional development, we also realized that in our policies, we had nowhere for Dr. Beresford to delay or cancel school in the policies. So we wanted to make sure he had that opportunity reflected in our policies. So this policy, because it talks about the calendar and the number of days, this also adds information regarding canceling and delaying school due to weather or other foreseen circumstances.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Any questions for Dr. Dudley? No, I just want to be clear, if anybody is listening, this policy talks about the school calendar. It has nothing to do with what the school calendar will be next year. It just gives the superintendent the power to cancel and delay school as needed and subject to state guidelines and state minimum requirements. So, thank you, Dr. Dudley. Thank you to the Policy Committee for all your hard work on keeping our policies up and current. Next, we will move to reports. The first report is a student data report. Dr. Dudley?
Okay, thank you. So this evening, I feel like I keep coming back to you, talking more about virtual learning, I have in the last several board meetings. But I wanted to share some feedback that we received from both our parents, as well as our teachers, and then our plans for next steps regardless of what our service delivery model will look like, whether it's in person, or it's virtual, or it's a combination of both, and what we're working on as a district to continue to get better at the services that we provide for our students. So as I said, this was feedback that was shared. We had a virtual learning feedback form for parents, and we had 3,411 parents respond to the feedback form. And the parent feedback form consisted of five questions where the parents rated it on a continuum of a five being strongly agreed to a one being strongly disagreed. And the parents also then had the opportunity to share comments on how we can enhance the virtual learning, also comments on, just in general comments on virtual learning, anything they wanted to share. And so we did have quite a few comments on that as well. And also, we had a teacher feedback form that we got feedback from our teachers. The teacher feedback form was a little bit different. It looked at how do we enhance the virtual learning, and then also the teachers had the opportunity, what professional development did they feel like they needed to enhance the services that they were providing for our students, as well as general comments. And we had 255 teachers respond to the feedback form. So first, going over the parent feedback form, the first question was, my student was easily able to access virtual learning materials. And as you can see, we had 80% of our parents that either agreed or strongly agreed with this statement on being able to access those virtual learning materials in our last nine weeks of the school year. The second question for the parents is, the average length of time it took for my student to complete his or her assignments was appropriate. And in this one, we had about 60% of our parents agree or disagree that the length of the assignments that the students were engaged in was appropriate for their age level. The third question was, the work my student was expected to do was appropriate for his or her grade level and ability level. And in this area, we had 70% of our parents that agreed or strongly agreed to the workload of our students and their ability as well. You can see some positive trends here. The next question, we really wanted to find out about their, the student's connection in their SEL. And so the question was, my student was engaged in activities during virtual learning that helped him or her feel connected to his or her teachers and peers. And here, we had about 45% of our parents agreed or strongly agreed that this happened. And this was a challenge of making sure we had those connections. And we heard Katie earlier say, you know, how she hopes that we get back to in person, because teaching and learning is all about making those connections and how important that is. You can see, this was more of a challenge for us in that area, and we're working on how do we get better if we do need to do that virtual learning. And then the last question that we asked our parents is, my student's teacher was available to answer questions and resolve issues as they came up during virtual learning. And in this area, we had 80% of our parents agree or strongly agree that problems were resolved quickly, and we could move forward, which was a good thing. We wanted to make sure that it was about the learning and not about accessing the technology or those issues. So some parent comments that came up, one of the most frequent parent comments are on here that we'll talk about. But one is that, in addition to these comments, many, many of the comments said, please, if at all possible, if we could not have the virtual learning at all possible. That was a recurring theme that we saw in our parent comments. And part of that was that connection that I know many of our parents talked about in the comments. It was very difficult to have those connections taking place. So some of these, the other recurring comments were streamline the content and the communication using one tool, so it is more easily accessible to our students, and the students can more easily navigate it, as well as our families can more easily navigate it. And looking at that student and family experience K-12, of how do we make sure that our students can easily access it, our parents can easily support their students in accessing that information. Another comment that we saw quite frequently was more scheduled time for small group work or one-on-one instruction with teachers during that virtual learning time. So looking at that scheduled time, another comment we saw from many high school parents as well that went along with this, was having that, that scheduled time during virtual learning. So if you have Algebra I in Block 1, that's the time you're doing that virtual learning. We saw that recurring quite a bit, where they talked about, the parents, most parents didn't use the word synchronous learning, but they were talking about having that synchronous learning where it's more on a schedule, like we do during the school day. Also, another comment that we saw very frequently was having more recorded video lessons of Carmel Clay Schools teachers rather than videos from the internet. So rather than using, there's a lot of great things out there that we used, you know, our teachers used videos from Khan Academy. They might have used other videos from YouTube of teachers putting out content out there. But they felt like having more of our Carmel Clay teachers sharing those recorded videos when our students were engaging in that would be a helpful thing to make it even better. And then also, a comment we saw very frequently is having additional feedback on submitted work. So students receiving that feedback from their teachers so that they can move the learning forward. And so that was something that we saw quite frequently in the comment sections. So, in response to this feedback that we got, and we are so appreciative that our families and our teachers take the time to share their feedback, because we are, we're reading it and we are responding to it to make things better. So in response to this, we are working with all of our teachers and our administrators to make the Canvas course design have Common Practices K-12, so that those families can expect, have the same expectations, whether you're in kindergarten or 12th grade, as far as navigating the course content. And so one of the things we're working on is optimizing the course design for that ease in navigation. We want to make sure that our students can, are just one to two clicks away from being able to access their content. When we first adopted Canvas, we used Canvas as a resource, as an area to keep resources, to curate those resources. But when we moved into our virtual learning, Canvas actually became our virtual classroom. And that's a very different use of Canvas. Our teachers did a fabulous job of putting content in Canvas, and they were very creative, and they made these beautiful Canvas pages. Sometimes they mirrored what their webpages used to look like. However, what we found was, that was not always as easy to navigate from our students and also from our parents. Because our students, a middle school student might find in math class, they go and find their assignments in a Google Doc, and then in their language arts class, they might find their assignments on the calendar. And so they're, they have to look and hunt and peck in different areas based on their course. And we want to make sure that it is very easy to navigate. Students can expect, this is where their assignments will be, this is how they can use the calendar, this is how the different features would be used. So another piece we're using is making sure our teachers understand how to use the Canvas tools in their lesson design, and making sure that it's accessible. Canvas has a lot of tools that we found not all of our teachers knew that were even available. One, for example, is called Immersive Reading Reader, where it will actually, the, the reader can set it to read whatever content is on the Canvas page. They can also change the background, they can change the different colors on the page, they can have it read more slowly or more quickly, they can click on certain words, and a picture of that word will come up to help the student understand what that word means. And it also can be translated into multiple different languages, which would really help especially our parents. That, you know, with our students, we don't translate all of their things into language, but if the parents are trying to support, and they do not speak or read or write English, they would be able to translate that and help to support their students. So those tools are already all embedded in Canvas. We want to make sure our teachers understand how to use those and really get the most benefit from those tools. Also, making sure our teachers are using the calendar tool and the assignment tool the same way kindergarten through 12th grade, so that the assignments are being posted on the calendar where the student can see, regardless of the classes that they're enrolled in, they can see all of their assignments, what's coming up, what's due on that calendar feature in Canvas. And it's very easy for not only our students, but also our families that are supporting. They may have two, three, four students that they're supporting, and they want to help their child to make sure they're not missing any assignment. They can very easily go to one place in that calendar to make sure that they're not missing any of those assignments. And then also, helping our teachers understand using the tools in Canvas to provide that feedback. Canvas has lots of tools embedded in it, as well as tools that are in our Google Suite that you can easily embed, that you can use SpeedGrader in Canvas. And basically, it makes it very easy for the teacher. Here's the assignment, the teacher can see, let's say they're, they can see Roger's assignment very quickly, they can read over it, they can give Roger written feedback, they could give Roger a video, they can record themselves giving him video feedback or just audio feedback. They can give him a grade, it can connect right to the Power School grade book, and then they can go on to the next student, and they see Tom's assignment. And then very quickly, they can read over, if there's a rubric involved, they can upload, they can score it on a rubric and upload it, so the student can then see, here's their assignment, here's the feedback from the teacher and the rubric. We want to make sure our teachers understand how to use those tools to give that feedback. One of the things we receive from our parents, as well as our teachers, is we need more timely feedback for those submitted assignments. And all of these pieces, regardless of our delivery model next year, we will be starting using Canvas, and using Canvas in that K-12 environment. So then we'll start with Canvas, so that if we do need to go virtually at any time, we'll be able to do that seamlessly. And we're also going to make sure that our youngest learners, right before we left for the break, you had the opportunity to learn from some of our kindergartners in our board meeting where they were showing you how they were using the Chromebooks and how they were using Canvas and different technology tools. We want to make sure those, our youngest learners are up and running as soon as we come back in person, so that if we do need to go virtually, they will be able to take that Chromebook and run with it and continue that learning. So, some other pieces, too, that not only just using the Canvas as that virtual classroom, we want to make sure that those virtual practices are, those best practices in that instructional learning. And so some of the things we'll be working on as well is identifying the essentials. So if we do need to go into a virtual, we have, we've prioritized those standards and those lessons to maximize that virtual learning. Because as you know, you can't take what you do every day in the classroom all day long and just turn it right into a virtual learning, because many things take a lot longer in virtual learning. So we want to make sure that we've had, we understand what are the priority standards and those lessons. And so we're working with our teachers this summer to identify those, so that we have those ready to go. And we're starting with those priority standards in the fall, whether we're in person or online. As well as working with our teachers, providing professional development on best, best practices in developing videos and developing short, midi lessons. in developing videos and developing short midi lessons that pause in between where the students have the opportunity to, they hear a little piece from the teacher and then they go and practice, then they come back, get another piece, and they go and practice. And so we're working on those best practices. And then also, again, using the variety of tools to provide that feedback to our students. So as well as with our teachers and working with our teachers to get better, we want to make sure that our students and our parents are poised to use Canvas regardless of the delivery model that we're using. And so making sure our students understand that Canvas course navigation and how they can easily navigate through the Canvas whether they're in first grade or they're in 12th grade, they can go in and navigate that course. And then also managing that workflow because managing a workflow in Canvas is very different than managing a workflow at your desk in the classroom. And helping our students to understand how do we manage that. So those are some things that we're going to make sure that we incorporate for our students when we come back in the fall. So as we go virtual or if we're in person, either way, we'll be able to get the very most from the Canvas. And then also from our teachers, for our parents, also helping our parents provide training for our parents. And this training will be in the form of a variety of ways. It may be recorded training, it could be in-person training if we're able to host those events. We can provide that training in a variety of ways of how can, what can they expect from the Canvas courses? And how can they easily navigate their children's Canvas courses and support their student in that online learning? And that would all be part of what we would provide to our parents so that they could get the most from the virtual learning that's happening in Carmel Clay Schools and the in-person learning as well. So what questions might you have?
Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley, for that very important and timely update. Like I've said before, and it's clearly not my quote, we built this plane in the sky last time, and I appreciate everything that curriculum and all of our departments have done and teachers have done, and appreciate hearing the feedback that we've gotten and as we plan to move forward. So I will ask anybody on the board if they've got questions. Katie?
Yes, thank you. So just to clarify, when you talk about streamlining, are we still going to use other tools such as Zoom and Google Docs and those things?
Yes, yes, great question. So we will still use Zoom, we'll still use the Google Docs, but we'll make sure that they're embedded within the modules of Canvas. Because one of the things we found, like for example, in Google Docs, there's a Google assignment, a Google Cloud assignment that allows you to use the speed grader like I described. But if you just put in a, here's a Google Doc that you force the student to make a copy of it, it doesn't embed it. So we're going to make sure our teachers understand how to use those tools and embed them into Canvas to make it much more accessible and much more easier for the students to navigate that. But yes, we'll still continue to use Zoom, we'll continue to use Google Docs, and then we'll also help our teachers to use some tools that are already embedded in Canvas that they may or may not be using these tools a lot. So for example, one is the discussion tool where you can go in and you can assign a whole class discussion, you can assign small group discussion where the students go in and they discuss with each other on a topic and helping the teachers understand how to use those tools that are already embedded.
Because I know one of the things as a parent that was always tough is the Zoom, which I loved, but the calendar part of it, I felt like a little personal assistant trying to figure out like when these meetings and stuff were, so.
And so one of the things we'll make sure that we do is embed Zoom. So if you have a Zoom meeting, it's in the module and it's put in as an assignment. So then it comes on the Canvas calendar and the link is right there embedded rather than a separate link, like what the teacher, many of the teachers did was they put it into like just a Google form or in the announcement, but it was never on the calendar as an assignment.
Perfect. And then my second question is, one of the great things that I loved is my child had speech therapy, and so his speech teacher would utilize Zoom to continue that over virtual learning, which I'm so incredibly thankful for. But she didn't have a Canvas page, so it was something that it was separate. Is that something like, I know that some specials teachers had Canvas pages, but is stuff such as speech therapy or any other things, would they be utilizing Canvas in the future?
So yes, we can work with, there's a little bit of a different setup when you're talking about a speech and language pathologist because we, but we can, there's a way to set that up that we can help our special area teachers set them up. Because you do have an issue where students don't all, they're not all in the same classroom for speech, so it's usually one at a time or small groups. And so it's whoever else has speech services, it's not those other students' business in there. So you set up the Canvas page so that you cannot see all of the students in that Canvas page, but there's a way that we'll make sure that our resource teachers, our SLPs, our other itinerant, our OT, our PTs, any of those teachers that need that Canvas page, we can embed that so that parents will be able to expect it. It'll be a little bit different, but very similar.
That's great. And like I said, I so appreciate the fact that they were able to still continue with those services even while we were at home, so thanks.
Thank you. Lynn?
I appreciate the feedback. I recall when I filled out the form, it asked for my kid's school and grade level. So I assume that the feedback here is shared with teachers at that particular X school and grades.
Yes, so the feedback forms just closed on Friday, and we did ask for the school and the grade level. So then we'll share the individual feedback for each of the schools back to the principal so that they can read the comments and then also look at the feedback for their individual school.
Thank you. Leila?
I've got a small question. First, I wanted to, when you have parents up there, you're going to have some tutorials and it will be creating so parents will be able to navigate within Canvas, so all the other teachers.
Correct. We want to make sure our parents understand what they can expect, how they can navigate, whether, regardless of whether they have a third grader or an eighth grader. And so it'll be a variety of different, it could be a tutorial with a voiceover, and we want to offer it in a variety of ways based on the learning needs of the parents. If we're in school and we're able to have parents come to a Canvas night, we can offer those as well if you would rather learn in person, if we're able to do that. So we'll just have to see what we're capable of, what we can do. But yes, it will be very specific geared towards parents of what they can expect and how they can support their child.
Okay. And my second question. Were we, are we, I was wondering, was it about the ENL?
So for the middle school, our plan, regardless of what happened in the last quarter, our plan was to go one-to-one with take-home devices for our sixth through eighth grade students.
And we are still onboard.
And we are still onboard, correct.
Thank you. Pam?
I had a similar question to Leila with parents because I was worried if there's a lot of parents out there who aren't aware of how to use Canvas or what to do, but you said you would probably, you could bring them into the schools and have a parent session on how to use them. Will you be doing that with E&amp;L parents as well? Because I'm sure that they are really having trouble.
Yes, we would invite all of our parents and we could have lots of different types of sessions if needed to help support our parents and how do they, you know, make sure that they understand how they can support their child and showing the different features in Canvas. Like I said, the feature where they can go in and have it translated.
Okay. And my next question is, since there are so many facets of Canvas that can be used in the classroom to help students, will your IAs and your teachers and your coaches, will they all be able to collaborate or will they all have this information in one spot so they can see who's working on what in the classroom? And can they continue that in their help sessions or in their, you know, when they're outside of the classroom?
So the way that Canvas works is if I was a teacher in Canvas, I would have my Canvas courses and then I could invite you to be a co-teacher. And so you could be, you could see everything in my Canvas, you could be a co-teacher where you could actually put information in, or you could be an observer. You wouldn't be able to put information in, but you would be able to see that same information. And so we, and we have that set up right now where we have teachers that are co-teachers. Like for example, with our teachers, our Gen Ed teachers, we, our special ed resource teachers are also co-teachers in the courses that they have students in those classes so that they can see what is happening in the Gen Ed classroom, just like we have that collaboration in person, we can also do that virtually.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure there's a continuum of services so that they're not receiving, you know, a block of something here and a block of something here. It just sounds like Canvas has a lot to offer.
Well, thank you, Dr. Dudley.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to the monthly financial update. This is actually a report for April and May because of the date of our last meeting, we didn't have that data available. Mr. McMichael?
Okay, so we have some track of what we used to, 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 to May. Do you have a microphone? Yeah. Okay. So for 2020, our education fund, referendum fund through the month of May, we ended with a cash balance of just over $4 million, and you'll see that that's up from, which we'd expected to be up from last year, a couple of different reasons. One is it needs to increase as our budget increases in order to maintain a percentage. And then this time of year, it also, you know, we started the year with a higher cash balance this year than we had a year ago. So there's, there's a variety of reasons. There's some impact with, as far as the referendum, as you're aware, taxpayers in most cases had an opportunity to delay paying their taxes. And we didn't really get a real major delay. There were some districts that were concerned that they might only collect 50% or 60%. So that's a delay, it's not a loss of revenue, it's just a timing issue. And so we were down, I think, about 4%. But mid-year, it's not an exact science because sometimes people pay for the whole year and sometimes they pay half a year. And there's a variety of things going on. So we're about where we would expect to be this time of year. Next month will be, is more significant for us because that's the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. And so we pay particular attention to, it used to be, years ago, it'd be January 1st, but now it's, because the funding from the state's on the July 1, June 30th, so we're more interested in the June 30 balance than we are January. Now, with regard to operations funds, a little bit, it's kind of the opposite there. And, but the operations fund is entirely local funds. And so we're, a number of reasons why we may be down a little bit, but this fund does not track from year to year because it depends on the expenditure pattern for construction projects and a variety of things like that that aren't always the same from one year to the next. It's also impacted more with anything going on with collections because it is, this fund is totally local sources. And so again, about where we would expect. And then, it was 19, and then at the end of the report, you have the reconciliation of bank statements and just beginning and ending balances for all the funds. So I'll respond to questions if you have.
Thank you, Roger. Do we have any questions for Roger on the financial report? Leila, go ahead.
My question's not necessarily about the report, but it's a financial question. Have you had any reason or need to, 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 to?
No. Carmel's a district that we have not maintained a balance in the rainy day fund. Prior to the whole issue with the pandemic, I had anticipated and still do anticipate recommending that we move some funds from our operation fund to the rainy day fund. I initially intended to make that recommendation, this part's not changed. I think we should move some funds because as we sell bond issues and so forth, Standard and Poor's considers the cash in the rainy day fund as a part of our cash balance. And so we talk about a minimum cash balance of 8%, they'd rather see 10% or 12%. There's nothing wrong with 10% or 12%, by the way. And our 8% is minimum, it's not maximum. So I had anticipated kind of a financial plan of putting some money in the rainy day fund. And once we put it there, generally speaking, it's, you know, we're not going to spend it right back out because, because it's kind of like the savings account as our other cash is. And so, but, but of course, as luck would have it, now we have a, you know, a crisis and we may actually need some rainy day funds because certainly this would seem to be shaping up to be a rainy day. Although, as you, I'm sure you know, we did get good news, at least from the governor, that indicated that we would be fully funded for this upcoming school year. So, so if we're good through June of '21, obviously by then we'll have, you know, a better perspective on where we're at and the impact of the pandemic as it relates financially. And so, so we'll talk more about that later, but, but that, you could anticipate that that'll be coming up. There's no particular hurry at this point, particularly if we're getting, continue to get fully funded from the state, which was, of course, really good news because, as you know, we have contracts in place and, which is where we spend most of our money. And so we made commitments based on, on the funding formula that we presumed would be funded. And so that was really good news.
Thank you, Roger. Any further questions for Roger on the financial report? There being none, we will move to board member reports. The first one is a legislative update, Leila.
So we've got several pages that are really duplicated. Page, we can probably scroll to page four. The first few pages just go through some of the past information that we have already presented. And I think the most important part in tonight is we're going to talk about the House Enrolled Acts. And the two that really are the most robust acts that have areas that will impact us are 1065 and 1066. And so we'll, on the next page, we'll jump to 1065 various tax matters. This particular act, it is far more robust than what I have included here. I've only included the areas that would really impact Carmel Clay Schools. The first is that although we's a school board, we're not excited about this, this particular law permits school corporations to distribute referendum tax money to charter schools if they are within our corporation boundaries. That being said, if we were to ever do this, the language must be included in the question itself. And then that question would have to be approved, like all other referendum questions. Same point is that charter schools can also distribute a portion of their charter school operation fund. We have some at our school, but off, we have, um, a lot at the, um, thank you. J. Everett Light. We can go to the next page, 1066. We've got two pages on this. The first of this very robust law is that the state legislature now gives us, although we already do this for our employees, um, as a benefit, but, um, school corporations can accept transfer students that do not reside in our school corporation, um, if the parents are employed in the said school district. They also included some specific information. They have to make at least $8,000 as an annual salary, or, um, if they're a coach, um, but to have some type of extracurricular responsibilities, they have to make a minimum of $3,000. They can't be one of our volunteer coaches and we do have many, many of those coaches. Second, the school districts can provide instructions to students explaining the different aspects of autism, different behaviors and how to perhaps interact, um, with students who have autism. We also have listed up here and, um, and it's only if a school upon request, um, school districts can provide disciplinary records of a student that are relative to the safety of the other students in the new school district. Um, but it is upon request. And I would assume that most school districts, when you get a transfer student from another school in the state of Indiana, that you would be, um, willfully providing this information, but, um, this law permits us to do so. We have another page of, um, there we go, 1066 continued. Um, our school buses can be used and we currently do use our school buses to transport students to the CTE programming. But this law permits us to do so. It also changed some of the students that we will be including in our ADM count. Something that's most, uh, I guess relevant to school boards is that after June 30th of 2021, um, school boards cannot enter into a contract with a superintendent during the, um, during the election. I'll just read what it says there. After the date of an election of one or more members of the governing body until July 1st of the year following the election. So, um, basically from the November election date through January 1st, you cannot enter into a new contract with the superintendent. But we're very happy with Dr. Beresford, so I don't foresee us making any changes at this time. So, um, we also, um, apparently this has been an issue in some other school districts, but this act requires principals or a designee to ensure that suspended students receive credit for their work completed as, um, the same as students who are not suspended. And there's, provides the representation or the, this law permits the United States flag and the Indiana state flag. We need to comply with federal and state laws concerning the design, the size, the dimension, and the presentation of the flags. And I know several of our, um, classrooms do have the state flag, um, or the, or the United States flag. And so we need to be sure that we are following statute on design, size, dimension, and how we present the flag. That really is it. We've got one more page that simply talks about what our next steps are. And, um, I know Dr. Beresford and I actually still continue to work with our legislators. Churchill, Tittle and Antrim, as well as ISBA are providing our school district policy updates with regards to new, um, legal updates from the new law and then perhaps even bylaw changes that we need to include. So we're working on that as we speak. And, um, the second one up there, I think, which is pretty big is monitor the impact of our current legislation with the virtual learning environment. And then we need to continue to look to see what we might want to see changed or implemented or, um, improved in law, or at least through the IDOE, um, for, to benefit our students as well as making it easier for us to navigate the virtual learning environment for our families. I will just point out one big thing, which I know we just learned about, and that is that our school district typically, if you are doing all virtual learning, the previous, um, financial reimbursement we get per student, the tuition reimbursement would only be 85% of stated, um, what we should be earning. And the Indiana Department of Education has recommended and will include a, um, another description of a student that if we are doing virtual learning because of COVID, we do not lose any money, um, from the state tuition reimbursement. So that's a benefit. Um, Dr. Beresford, do you have any other, um, steps or ideas or anything you'd like to add? I know that you have been watching several tutorials that have been provided by other people.
Sure. Uh, I think you covered it well. Uh, one thing, um, that we were very concerned about was one was that we get full, whole funding, which Roger mentioned, the governor made that announcement. And the second thing we were very worried about was, uh, that whole notion that if it's, uh, kids doing 50% or less, they'll only be funded at 85%. And then we received that information. Uh, I would encourage everyone to actually, um, contact the governor and our representatives and, uh, and thank them and the Department of Ed, thank them for, uh, you know, going to bat for us that way and, uh, and making those decisions, uh, because, uh, a shortfall this time would be really devastating because it's, it's going to be a little more expensive, uh, you know, with the extra things we have to do this coming fall. And, uh, and also, uh, you know, our, our legislators will be coming back and it'll be, uh, we want to thank them and encourage them to support the governor and the Department of Education, especially in those two matters. So, uh, I think it's a good time to, to thank them for, uh, for keeping our support the way they have.
Well, thank you, Leila, for part three of three parts. We appreciate the update. We appreciate, uh, learning about what's going on. To me, it's always interesting to see what gets crammed into what bills and, um, that was a good example of multiple things in various bills. So, thank you both. Um, next, we will move to the Carmel Clay Parks Department report. Lynn.
I have two items to report. Um, Monong Community Center has opened since May 24th, but it's currently open to members on, owning and by appointment only. Um, uh, the stage five opening starts July 4th, then Mona Center should be open to the public. Another opening here is the water park, right? That's essential for summer. So it has opened since June 14th, uh, opens daily 11 to 7:00. Uh, and it should be open again, um, to a bigger capacity after July 4th. So that's my report.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have any questions for Lynn? No, thank you. Next, we will move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Beresford.
I've got a, uh, a short but powerful list here. And, uh, first I wanted to, uh, we had a couple of cultural celebrations over this last weekend that I think were pretty significant. And, uh, one was on Friday, the 19th, also known as Juneteenth, is, uh, the official end of slavery. And, uh, and our black community and culture has been celebrating Juneteenth since 1865, uh, when the last, uh, slaves were freed in Galveston, Texas. And, uh, and so that's a celebration that's been going on for centuries. And then, uh, also on Saturday, June 20th was International Yoga Day, which I know was important to Mr. McMichael over there. But, um, that is actually, uh, you know, another celebration in our, uh, you know, originated in India and our Hindu culture and, uh, several different cultures, uh, have adopted yoga. And so, uh, just a little bit of culture there. We had some, uh, really pretty big things and, uh, going on this weekend besides Father's Day, which, uh, uh, you know, fathers and also mentors and, and people who are, we have a lot of school dads in the district too, that, uh, that, uh, help, help our students when they're at school. A couple of reminders, um, we have new start times starting next year and, uh, we made that announcement, but we, uh, we're talking about it as administrative and we really need to start beating that drum so everybody remembers, uh, that, uh, the times for both elementary and secondary, uh, start times are different. And then, uh, the secondary is also going to have a, a, a different ending of the day. And so those start late and also the late start days, uh, twice a month. Um, you know, we've got those queued up and ready to go. And, um, we'll have links for this on the, the board recap, but we have that, it's all listed on our website at this point in time. So we'll send those links out when we do the board recap, but want to remember that, uh, you know, times are changing. Um, another reminder, and, uh, I know you're getting tired of this, but complete the 2020 census. Uh, it's really, really important. And, uh, I know that can be one of those things you keep thinking, I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. And it's been extended to August 15th, but that'll be here before you know it. And it's really important to our free and reduced lunches, our literacy programs, special education, and a lot of different pieces of the district. Um, also want to do a couple of shout-outs. Uh, the Indy Star had kind of like, you know, the ESPs have the, you know, the, the, they pick the best athlete in different sports and that sort of thing. And, uh, the Indy Star did the same thing locally and we had two, um, uh, two people that were Boys Swimmer of the Year, it was Wyatt Davis, who set the record for the most, uh, most decorated swimmer in, in Indiana history. And then also Boys Tennis Player of the Year was Presley Thiemann. And, uh, I got to watch Presley quite a bit and, uh, he's phenomenal. And, uh, so congratulations to those two, uh, two young men. Also, the Carmel High School Debate, uh, Team had a record year. Uh, that program had kind of quieted down a little bit and this year came back roaring and they had, uh, five people that went to the Nationals in debate. And, uh, wanted to do a shout-out to Rohil Sinapati, Irish Yan, we've heard her name quite a bit. Caleb Sui, Jaden Sage Mita, uh, all went to Nationals and, uh, were like, like 45th, 53rd, 54th, something. They were all in the very, you know, top end of the, uh, the national speech and debate. So, uh, um, just kudos to those guys and, and that program's really, uh, bounced to the top. So well done for the sponsors and all the students involved. Um, a big important thing's gone down on Wednesday and I'm sure you've all heard of it and you're really fired up, but we are cutting the ribbon on the electric school bus. Uh, I know that sounds like a, a cartoon, you know, the electric school bus, but we actually have a, a, an electric school bus that we, um, it's totally electric and it's the first one of its kind in Indiana. And we awarded a grant to pay for the cost of the bus that exceeded the cost of what we would pay for like a regular diesel bus. And, uh, so, um, we have, um, you know, Mr. Kirchner, the mayor, and a few other special guests are going to, uh, speak at that event. We're going to have it right over at the transportation where the, uh, electric bus will be displayed. And, uh, really I'm excited about it because one of the parts of our strategic plan was the expansion of environmentally friendly initiatives. And our transportation has been a real leader with that, with the, you know, uh, growing that propane, um, you know, fleet of buses. And now here we go again with a, a totally electric bus. So, uh, I'm proud about that. And then we're going to commemorate this newest green measure in our district and kudos to Mr. McMichael and Mr. Farron for their leadership and, uh, and trying to take care of our environment the way they do. Um, and then I, I thought I would, uh, finish with, uh, the question of the day. And so the question of the day has always been, and everywhere I go, I get the same question of the day is, uh, what is the fall going to look like? And, uh, so we're going to send out a preliminary message to families tomorrow, but I thought I'd give us a little sneak peek, uh, you know, this evening. And, uh, first off, I want you to know we have opened the fields, the track, the tennis courts, those are open for community use by the community. And we're urging everyone to please follow the CDC guidelines. Uh, but those, uh, the outdoor areas are, are open, the indoor, um, areas remain closed, you know, in the order of the IDOE. And, uh, but those will be opening up in, uh, in July. Uh, you've probably already heard that school athletics are going to be opening up, uh, on a limited basis on June, uh, July, excuse me, July the 6th. And, uh, there's, the IHSAA has guidelines that our coaches and, and athletic department are following and communicating and taking all the actions necessary to keep that as safe as possible. Uh, our preliminary communication tomorrow, uh, will say, uh, some of the following. Uh, the first thing is we're going to follow our published calendar. So we'll be starting on, I think, August 11th and, uh, following our normal calendar. Uh, we will be opening school in person, five days a week, and, uh, we'll be using the Indiana Department of Education and Hamilton County Health Department guidelines, which will be using, uh, all the safety guidelines and social distancing and masks and all the different, uh, pieces to that to the highest degree possible, um, and practical. Um, I don't know what else I would add, developmentally appropriate. So, uh, I'm going to keep adding some conditions to that, but get used to that, there's going to be a lot of conditions on, on about everything. Uh, we are going to have a virtual option, uh, for those students who have underlying health issues. And also that applies to staff as well. We may have some staff that, uh, yeah, they will not, you know, it's not safe for them to be in a, a, a large group, uh, with this virus out there. Um, so that will be an option that will be out there. Uh, right now we have a COVID-19 planning group and they're working on, uh, answering the questions, the million questions, uh, to get a very detailed plan, um, on, uh, the procedures and policies. Uh, Dr. Oestreich's part of that, uh, Dave Woodward's, uh, part of that. And, uh, we've got teachers, we've got people from every angle of the district involved in that planning committee because we didn't want to have, to miss something, you know, to miss having unintended consequence because we're missing something. So what's going to happen is we're going to share the specific plan, uh, in July and hopefully pretty early in July. And at the same time, when we share that detailed plan, we're also going to collect data from parents to see who's going to pick virtual, who needs virtual, uh, program, who's going to pick the in-person program. We're going to ask questions about transportation, about food service, and, uh, we're just going to be, uh, pulling in, uh, as much information we can in order to be able to staff appropriately and do the preparations necessary to open in the fall. So, uh, there's that, but there's always the asterisk at the end, which is to please keep in mind, uh, directives and guidance from the state and local authorities and even the United States authorities, health, uh, guidance, uh, can change very quickly. Uh, it's changed again this, this week. Uh, so, uh, we always have to keep in mind, we're going to continue to share information on any adjustments that, that are needed as we move forward. Uh, but, uh, we've got a plan and we're ready to go. I'll also add that we're sharing what the plan is for the fall. Uh, but we have been working and we've been working on different options, uh, if that environment should change and we should get a different order, you know, from the state or from the governor or even from the country. So, uh, you know, and, uh, we're in a situation where we're planning for anything and, and everything. And, uh, I just want to throw a kudos to the team that's here and the team that's not here, that's been working tirelessly, uh, since March, uh, to work out the details of this and, uh, and improve it for our, our families. Um, Dr. Dudley did a real nice job, explained that her, her team really took to heart that, you know, our teachers and our kids, that we need to streamline it, we need to make it simple, we need to teach our kids, uh, make it easy for our teachers, make it easy for our kids, streamline. And, uh, and let's organize in a way so everybody knows where to go quickly and easily because what we found, we got a lot of feedback that people were struggling with, you know, where to find information, it was different in every class and those sorts of things. And they've really worked hard to correct that and, and take that feedback seriously and done a nice job with that. Um, everybody on, just everybody's been pushing hard to get this, uh, ready and to have all those options, uh, covered. So, uh, so kudos to the, the team, uh, for really, um, you know, working hard and, uh, and studying hard. Bell ringer, um, you already met her. It was Peggy Taylor. And, uh, I've got to say, uh, uh, it was the last time, you know, that we were driving to somebody's house to walk up in their yard with them totally unexpected, uh, to give them a, a yard sign that said, you are the, the, uh, you know, the, uh, staff, you know, person of the year. And, uh, and, you know, you saw Peggy and you heard the words from, uh, Dr. Oestreich of, uh, I read all of the nominations for her and she may be the sweetest lady on the planet, uh, the nicest, sweetest lady. And, uh, a lot of the comments were, um, you know, things about, you know, a lot of things wouldn't happen if it wasn't for, for Peggy. And, uh, and you just saw kind of from her personality how sweet she is. But, um, I will tell you that, um, a bunch of people from Carmel High School showed up and kids showed up and it was a crowd in her yard. And, uh, it was really, uh, you know, if you want your heart to feel good, uh, I said, I said, this is probably the best. you are the, you know, the staff, you know, person of the year. And, and, you know, you saw Peggy and you heard the words from Dr. Ostrich of, I read all of the nominations for her, and she may be the sweetest lady on the planet, the nicest, sweetest lady. And a lot of the comments were, you know, things about, you know, a lot of things wouldn't happen if it wasn't for Peggy. And, and you just saw kind of from her personality how sweet she is. But I will tell you that a bunch of people from Carmel High School showed up and kids showed up and it was a crowd in her yard. And it was really, you know, if you want your heart to feel good, I said, I said, this is probably the best day of my, you know, after fighting the virus all, you know, semester long. It was really nice to see that and it was really amazing. It's always nice to see someone who really goes and, you know, the extra miles for, for the, the teachers and for the students and the, to make the environment that special. And to see them rewarded is just something pretty special. So anyhow, bell ringer's Peggy Taylor. She's a, she's a peach. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford, for that very informational report. As always, do we have any questions for Dr. Beresford on his report? There being none, we will move to announcements. July 2nd and 3rd, all offices will be, all CCS offices will be closed for the July 4th holiday. July 27th, we have a school board regular session meeting. August 10th is Teacher Contract Day. And as Dr. Beresford said, August 11th will be the students' first day of school. And August 12th will be our school board workshop session. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you. Was that Pam? Thank you, Pam. Second? Thank you, Katie. All in favor of adjourning, please signify by raising their hand. All were in favor? Thank you. Motion, motion to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.